Good evening, everyone. The January 12th, 2021 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Vice Chair King, would you kindly read our commitment statement?
I sure will. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please remove your hats and turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board's secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the rule.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Please come forward, Mr. Kevin Shealy, President and CEO, and also Dean, Mr. Dean Blinkhorn, Director of Talent and Development with CEP, to lead us in the inspiration and the pledge.
Thank you, Madam Chair and School Board members. It's a pleasure to be with you always, but especially now as I realize this is, I think, your first board meeting of the new year. And as we think about a year, I don't know any year that's been more looked forward to by individuals than 2021.[208.23][208.23](Laughter). But I think we have to stop and take a moment and recognize there were good things that happened in 2020, and there were things from which we learned lessons. But the most important thing is, we just have to keep moving forward. The bad is in the past. The good is in the past, but it's about moving forward and continuing to think how we make an impact as a community, how we make an impact as partners, and how we make an impact for students and for families in our community. Thank you for letting me be with you today. I wanted to take, when we scheduled this, just an opportunity to share with you a partnership that we've been having with the superintendent, where we've organized a series of meet and greet events for businesses to have a chance to share their thoughts, their issues, their concerns, their ideas for the future with the superintendent. And she has been such a great partner with us on this. She, we have done seven of these, we have two more, we just keep adding them, but I think we're going to be done at nine. By the time we're done, more than 100 businesses will have had a chance to have either breakfast or lunch at the CEP with the superintendent. Kevin Christian has joined us for all of those to get all the information down, but it's been an incredible opportunity for them to share. Different industry groups, I think our last two are construction trades coming up, and then we're very excited, I think next week, we have a group of Hispanic businesses that are going to be meeting. And so, as we think about their opportunities to share, for many of them, they feel like this was the first time that they've really been able to give their input, that they've been asked. And so, they're excited because, and we like that, because we know that once they have a chance to share, they want to be more engaged. And we know the secret sauce is engagement broadly throughout our community, and that's what we want to see at the CEP. So, we're so excited for that and for this partnership. We've had a really strong partnership between the CEP and the business community and the schools system over the last couple of years. I'm so excited as we continue to see that grow and expand. And so, to thank Dr. Gullett for her participation in these meet and greets and being such a good partner, we have a little gift for her, and I know she'll be so excited to have this.[348.28][348.28](Laughter).
You probably won't like surprises.[354.87][354.87](Laughter). It's a big...
She let me to open it now.
Oh, of course.[360.53][360.53](Laughter).
It could be something else.
So, as she's opening this, know that one of the great things, of course, Dean leads all of our engagement with the school system, who, of course, has a publishing and communications background, and so Dean is great with that, and so Dean helped design part of how we promoted this. And one of the things that we know and discovered very quickly is that with our invites that went out, and then with every group, we would have their picture with their poster.[393.12][393.12](Applause). The very first meeting, the superintendent made very clear, she really did not like this poster, which, of course, this became something for us to use all the more, but we appreciate your partnership and for doing this, and so that is yours, I'm sure, to put someplace very special.[413.47][413.47](Laughter).
Your resemblance is remarkable.
I signed the back of it for you.
Yes. Which means, of course, you do have to keep it, because it is autographed.
Oh, wow.[426.24][426.24](Laughter).
A little empty space right back there.
There's it, yeah.[430.62][430.62](Laughter).
Well, I, can I stand here, Mr. Christian Hall?
You will not be heard, either sit or come to the board.
If you want to sit, we can hold the poster right here, and you could be in two places at once.
That works.
I would, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Shealy and Mr. Blinkhorn, I cannot thank them enough, because when I had a conversation with you early on, I said, "Help me to engage with the community, the business partners, so that I can learn how we can better serve and connect," right? And we've had a lot of great things that have happened in the past and want to move forward onward and upward, right? And so, you said, "I have just the idea to do that." So, I want to thank Kevin for creating this opportunity for me. I have learned so much by listening to our leaders in the community, and we have actionable items now because of that, right? So, I'm looking forward to sharing those with everyone as we work to continue to partner and put those pieces together, but thank you so much. You've been, I've been great to host, and I really appreciate the opportunity. This is why this is such an incredibly special community, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And you know, the reason I don't like this, because I don't want it, I don't want it to be about me, I want it to be about us and about our students, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
And I believe now we need to do the Pledge of Allegiance, so I would ask if you would please stand. Please join me in reciting the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Very good. Thank you.
Yes, thank you to both of you and to Dr. Gullett as well for being such great catalysts for our school district.[535.54][535.54](Laughter). Okay, and then next we have Ms. Judy Zanetti, Executive Director with Marion County Public Education Foundation, and she's forward to recognize School Related Employee of the Year.
Well, good evening, Dr. Gullett and members of the school board. As always, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Yes, I'm going to be introducing you in just a moment to our 2021 Marion County School Related Employee of the Year, but before I do that, I'm going to give you a little history on the last few years of this award. So, last year, we introduced you, in 2020, we introduced you to Candace Reese. Candace is a guidance clerk at Reddick Collier Elementary School. In the year 2019, I introduced you to LaShonda Lacy, who was a district finalist for School Related Employee of the Year, and she was a paraprofessional at Reddick Collier Elementary School. She is now a fifth grade teacher at Reddick Collier Elementary School. In 2018, I introduced you to Ruby Cox. She was the district winner for School Related Employee of the Year, and she now works as a specialist in our IT department here at the school district, but she was at the time a paraprofessional at Reddick Collier Elementary School.
Oh, goodness.
In 2017, we went to a different school. That was actually Caroline Farmer, when she was at Forest High School. But 2016, I introduced you to Abel Garcia from Reddick Collier Elementary School, and Abel was a paraprofessional at Reddick Collier. He went on to not only be Marion County's School Related Employee of the Year, but the state of Florida's School Related Employee of the Year, and Abel is now the TV production teacher at Liberty Middle School.
Oh, my goodness.
So, I just wanted to share with you that Reddick Collier Elementary School has got a lot going on out there.[646.66][646.66](Laughter).
Must be the one.
And this year is no different. So, I'm going to talk just for a moment about Kathy, and then her principal, Ms. Sandy, will say something as well, and then you'll meet Kathy yourself. So, this year, our 2021 Marion County School Related Employee of the Year is Kathy Gottschner. She is sitting behind me. She is a paraprofessional at Reddick Collier Elementary School. She has worked for our district for 13 years, and all 13 of those years have been at Reddick Collier. I have here a letter of recommendation that came with her application that was written by her assistant principal, Clayton Allen. I'm just going to read a little bit of this to you. "As a leader, I am only as good as the people around me. Ms. Gottschner keeps me constantly reminded that we can conquer any obstacle in our way. She enters the front office daily with a can-do attitude and is ready to make, to take on the day's challenges. What I appreciate most about Ms. Gottschner is that while I seek to empower her and other employees on my campus, she empowers her coworkers and me as well." And I think that that really speaks to her and her heart and how she participates there on the campus of Reddick Collier. And to say a few more words, we have her principal, Ms. Christine Sandy.
Aren't I the lucky one? Good evening, Board Chair, Board members, and Dr. Gullett. I am the lucky one to be at Reddick Collier Elementary School, where we have a wonderful support staff to help the children. Ms. Gottschner is one, is a very strong example of that kind of an individual. When you come to work at Reddick, you're a jack-of-all-trades, and you do many things. It's a small school, and you don't get pigeonholed into one area, you take on many responsibilities. Ms. Gottschner is that kind of a person. She has helped us, in fact, she helps everyone, including the students. In fact, the students call her Ms. Kathy. And it's funny that when I had to send out a sky alert to parents on Friday afternoon, I was telling parents that Ms. Kathy would be with the kids, and consequently, even the parents know Ms. Kathy. So, and in the afternoon or after-school, she happens to work at the local Dollar General. And it is amazing how Ms. Kathy is a conduit for us. She's our public relations officer. She is out in the community on a daily basis, holding parent conferences, being that conduit between school and the community, and helping us make a difference in the lives of kids. And that is her greatest strength, is that kids are very much the forefront for her. Kids are what drive her. She is the Safety Patrol Coordinator, and everyone looks forward to seeing Ms. Kathy in the spring when you're entering fifth grade, because she is going to be your ticket to your Safety Patrol badge that you wear every single day, and that is what makes Ms. Kathy so special, and no wonder she was selected. She's one, one of the best, and we're lucky to have her being an employee with the Marion County Schools. But I'm going to be finished, and I'm going to let you hear from her all the wonderful things she's going to share with you this evening.
Thank you.
All these things said, I hope I can hold up to it. Good evening, everyone. I don't do very well at public speaking. Hmm? I'm going to try to do this, and my glasses not fog up. So, we're going to go like this. My name is Kathy Gottschner, and when I was asked to do this inspirational speech for tonight, there was only one way I could do this, and it was to be, "Who inspired me?"[882.43][882.43](pause). I've worked for the school board since 2000, since 2007. I've done everything you can imagine being a para, from working with kids all day long to EBD, and to now I am, I do safety patrols and other roles that, you know, come up throughout the day. About three years ago, midway through the year, this lady came to us. Ms. Sandy. Our first day on campus, we were introducing ourselves, and I said, "My name is Kathy Gottschner. I'm just a para." She said, "Oh, no, you're not just a para." Her response was very uplifting and encouraging. She said, "No, not just a para. You play a very important role." And it wasn't until then that I realized just how important I was. We worked that year to get our school grade up, and with her hard work and dedication, that's just how we achieved it. She refused to take anything else for an answer. No is not in her vocabulary. It was then that I realized that true hard work and dedication, what it really meant. I realized it then, as I do today, just how much of an impact she's had on my life, as well as others. She continues to encourage and uplift and inspire her staff and employees and students every day. After being awarded Non-Instructional Employee of the Year, I didn't see whatever one else saw in me. It's hard to see what others see in you. I realized that she and I have had, have the same hard-working, gentle, kind, caring, and love, same drive, compassion for children. No is not in her, no is not in her vocabulary, as I said before. Where there is possibilities, there was always, there was always work to do. I could go on and on about this wonderful lady who continues to inspire not only me, but our whole Reddick Collier campus on a daily basis. But I can't stand here all night and tell you about this wonderful woman. I could, but you'll get bored. So, I'll end this with a poem. Life is a lot of work. What it gives, what it is gives us strength to continue when we are tired and burned out. Sometimes, an inspirational idea can help us renew ourselves and be fulfilled with strength to fulfill our life's purpose. Inspiration comes in many forms. However, the root of all inspiration is the idea that our lives are meaningful. Inspiration is knowing that I, what I do matters deeply in the universe. When you have the feeling that your actions are meaningful, you will become fulfilled with the strength to fulfill your life's purpose. Thank you.
Don't run away too fast, Ms. Kathy.[1089.33][1089.33](Laughter).
You're just trying to get out of here.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. The board has lots of things to share with you, I'm sure, so... How do you want to start?
Yeah, I'll just start off with congratulations.
Thank you.
And just even by your speech, it just showed how selfless you truly are, because tonight is about you, but you made it about somebody else, who, I agree 100% with what you said. I always say whoever has the chance, and I've never worked under Ms. Sandy, but I can tell enough to know that if you have that opportunity, you are going to be a better teacher, person, whatever that is. I can just tell, because she don't play. I always say that. She does not play, but she means business, but it's for the right reasons, and it's for students.
And it definitely comes from love. It does.
Yeah, and just like you, I can tell that you're all of that, so, thank you for all that you do, and I think congratulations.
Congratulations, and thank you for your selflessness, and I love what Ms. Sandy said, when she said, "Oh, no, you're not just a para," because you know what? You are so important in the lives of our children and their success.
Thank you.
So, thank you. When she came to Reddick Collier, I lost her at the Children's Alliance, and, but I knew, I knew that she was in the right place, and so, I thank her for sharing you with us, so, thank you.
We could tell that you, you don't like being in the front.
No, I don't.
And you like to...
I'm an extrovert who doesn't like attention.[1189.42][1189.42](Laughter). Play that one.
Well, guess what? The cameras are all on you right now.
I know, right?[1194.73][1194.73](Laughter).
So, but thank you for what you're doing every day, and thank you for making Reddick a better school.
Thank you.
And hanging in there with them through the good and the bad, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I echo my fellow board members. I mean, you're doing amazing things there, and congratulations, very deserving, as we can hear. Your poem was very inspirational as well. I think it's so vitally important as we understand our purpose, and it's clear that you understand what your purpose is, and it's to be with kids. Kids are a lot easier to talk to than adults, whenever you're talking in this kind of setting. But very, very much deserved, and congratulations again.
Thank you.
Yep, Ms. Kathy, you've got it. You've just got it, and, and I'm so glad that you and Ms. Sandy crossed paths with each other, and I'm sorry that it took so long for someone to tell you that you are not just a para. None of us are just anything. We're, we're all cogs in the same wheel, and, and without you, we're less. So, thank you so much for, for everything that you do, especially your outreach in the community, and, and you're so known in that way, and it's all love, and it's all about the kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you.[1267.61][1267.61](Applause).
Now, we have to try to top that.[1274.73][1274.73](Laughter). Take care.
Thank you.
All right. Superintendent Gullett.
I'm sorry to top that.[1283.21][1283.21](Laughter). Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I recommend approval of the agenda for the January 12th, 2021 School Board meeting, with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of item C 9.1, that has been withdrawn completely from the agenda.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Move.
Moved by Cummings.
Second.
Seconded by Campbell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 27th, 2020 School Board meeting?
First.
Moved by McCall, seconded by King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 5th, 2020 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So, move.
Moved by Cummings. Seconded by King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Persons requesting to address the board. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting regarding either one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and district, school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board's secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless a statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. And Ms. Martinez Lopez, how many speakers do we have this evening?
We have two. Mr. Edwin Hall.
Okay. Yes, sir, come on up. And would you time for us, please, Attorney Powers?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good evening.
I see friends up here. Ms. Thrower, Ms. King, we've met. Ms. McCall, you made a big mistake, Ms. Campbell. You called me on the phone. Now, I know who you are, and you're not going to get away from me. She already knows what I'm talking about. My name is Edwin Hall, H-A-L-L. I live at 34, 3507 East Fort King Street in Ocala, 34470. I teach at Vanguard High School. I've been in the school system for 25 years. I'm sorry that Ms. Sandy left. I actually took a class from Ms. Sandy on a reading endorsement when I was getting my ESE certification many years ago, and she was a great reading teacher, and I'm Reddick Collier Elementary, Reddick Collier Elementary, gee, I wonder if that has something to do with leadership over there at Reddick Collier Elementary. I'm here tonight to talk about a project that I've been involved in the last two years. It's called the Mespies. We had some video, Kevin, that I sent over, and I have little handouts here if someone wants to look at them. It's the same slides I have here, or what are going to be on the board. The Mespie stands for Marion County Excellence in Edging Sports Performance by Youth. E-S-M, that's your buddy, Phil Small came up with that. He's smarter than I am, and he can, he can create stuff like that. What happened was about two years ago, and I've been involved in basketball on a statewide level a lot with the high-elite players. So, I know that around the state, there are big-time, end-of-year sports awards banquets. Tim Tebow speaking, $50 a plate, sold out, big things. We have nothing in Marion County. So, I, I kind of got under the skin of the newspaper a little bit, because I commented on, boy, it was really nice of how the Sarasota Herald Tribune put on this super-duper show, and so, the sports editor got back at me and kind of cussed me out a little bit. I said, "Okay, fine, point well taken, I'll do it." Kevin, is that not...
I don't have that.
Senator, okay. Let me, let me pass it out, then, if you, you guys want this stuff, just so you can, is that okay? Because this is the slides that I would, you would see up on the board. So, the first one talks about...
Thank you.
...what the purpose of the Mespies is, which is to call to attention that I think high school sports is important, and recognize the kids, and the little employees that are concerned in place. So, we created this event. We had it over at MTI, had about 500 kids show up, or 500 people, with parents and kids and so forth. You can see there, the first slide, the second slide is the stage, the way it was set up. We just went with the Players of the Year as per the star banner for each sport. The Players of the Year got those nice pictures, just like yours, Dr. Gullett.[1716.53][1716.53](Laughter).
You look kind of familiar.
Rondo helped me with food, so all the kids and their parents got a couple dinners to take home with them afterwards. They all got a nice shirt that said Mespies on the front, and had a really nice graphic on the back. The graphic was paint was created by a kid at Vanguard High School, showing a bunch of sports figures and so forth, and it was called Best in Preps, Marion County at the bottom. So, that went really well. I also know that in Hillsborough County, the Steinbrenner Foundation puts on a big shindig for all the high school coaches in Hillsborough County. Now, you can imagine, that's a lot of people, when you're talking about the head coach, assistant coaches, the JV coach, the freshman coach, all of that. And so, I went to Jody Phillips and said, "I want to do that here for our high school coaches." We talked through it a little bit. This could, this could run up to 800 people, and I've already, that's going to be the last slide there. I've already booked the livestock pavilion. It's going to involve a lot of people, band, food, door prizes. Hello, I need door prizes.[1791.53][1791.53](Laughter). Ms. Campbell, I'm coming after you, Ms. Campbell. She, she made the big mistake of letting me know just how... She made the big mistake of letting me know just how much she knows about this kind of stuff. A whole lot more than I know about it. So, you're in trouble. Anyway, I'm pushing forward on that. It's going to be a pretty big deal. When you start inviting every coach and his wife or husband, that's a lot of folks. I was shocked when Jody told me. I said, send me all the supplemented positions in Marion County because there's seven schools. They all have a certain number of coaches. It comes to about 60 per school. It's a lot of people. I hope they don't all show up. But you start multiplying that times two, then of course, I want to include the four major private schools, T.C., St. John, Meadowbrook, and O.C.A. So, it's going to be a big deal. I'm pushing forward. I've got some community support from some people that I think will... The big money, that's not going to be the problem. Door prizes has got to be a big deal to make it a fun evening. I've asked my people down in Tampa, you know, what do they get? I said, oh, my God, they get trips to Las Vegas, and they get keys to a car, and they get this, that, and the other. You know, I can get some golf balls and some rounds of golf at Golden Ocala, but I need a whole lot more than that. So, anyway, just making you aware of it. You know, I'm not here to ask you to foot the bill because I'm going to take care of that. But just know that I'm doing this because I want to support high school athletics. It's been my life. That's what I've done my whole life. I coached major college basketball, and I've coached kids in the eighth grade. My first job was at a junior high school, just like a lot of the people in this room probably started out as elementary teachers or ninth-grade teachers. I've done that. I spoke at the Florida High School Coaches Clinic a couple months ago, and I said, everything you guys do, I've done. If you coached eighth graders, trust me, I coached eighth graders. Okay. Any questions or anything you want to just throw out there? I know Ms. Thrower pretty well. I know Ms. McCall through her son, who's doing a pretty good job up at Hugh Mass. Actually coached Ms. Sandy's son when he was at Forest High School, unbelievably. Anything that anybody wants to add or...
I just want to thank you, Mr. Hall, for... And he truly foots the bill for most of this and because he believes so strongly in high school athletics. And we all know having those kids involved also helps them in the classroom. So, thank you very much for all that you're doing. It does not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. King from over at Vanguard, I know her.
Yeah. I was like, I have had firsthand experience with you as a teacher, and it was just wonderful. And this is wonderful to do. So, what you're asking, you're asking that we're aware of this, but you're also asking the community for help with...
Well, I'm definitely going to be reaching out to Mr. Shelley, who was up here. I think he's the connection, the conduit to the business. Because it doesn't have to be huge door prizes, but if you're going to have 800 people there, you want to have a lot of them, you know, ding, 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 guess who won this? And just to make it a fun affair, it's a party. It's not a Coach of the Year banquet. It's not a matter of who got, who won the most games, or this, that, or the other. It's just an end-of-the-year celebration of their work, of their efforts. And so...
Mr. Hall, if people want to help, would you like to give your phone number so that they can call you if they have door prizes, or how would you like to handle that?
Sure, we can do that. It's 352-817-0824. Text me. Text is a lot better than phone calls, okay? I'm one of those guys now. I'm crazy now. When the phone rings, I go, hello? Okay, I know 99% of the people don't...
That's what I did.
She did. Well, you called me, though. You called me.
I called you back.
You called me, and I picked up the phone, and I said hello, and then you had to start talking.
Thank you.
Yeah, so anyway, I thank you so much for your time. Good to see you, sir. We haven't met before. But everyone else I've had a chance to visit with.
I'm sure you'll see me soon.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
We appreciate all you do, Coach Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. I got to go over to T.C. and watch the game.
There you go.
Melanie Slaughter.
Good evening. Melanie Slaughter, 4525 Southeast 12th Avenue, S.L.A.U.G.H.T.E.R. I am here today because of, I've been attempting to work with some kids at Vanguard High School to help them graduate. I am having significant deficits, and I think a lot of it is linked to the fact that kids are going through the middle school, and they are credit deficient when they start high school. And then, but they keep getting shoved through. And it can be a half a credit, it can be a full credit. They don't have enough credits to even start high school, all right? They get shoved into Play-Doh, which is a total colossal waste of time. And because you basically get a question, and you get three chances to get the right answer, and there's four possibilities. And if you can, if you miss every single time, eventually you'll hit the right answer, and then you move on to something else. So, they don't learn anything. Then, when they get into Vanguard or some other high school, they can't pass the F.S.A. They're credit deficient when they get up there. And then, I'm dealing with seniors this year who are one, two-credit deficient. And it is a nightmare to try to get them in online classes and other things like that to get them through so that they're going to ultimately graduate. So, what I would like to do, if it's a half a credit, it's an easy thing to fix. If they lose an entire credit in English or in math, their chances of graduate diminish about 60 to 70 percent. I mean, it is a huge, huge problem. So, I am starting, I'm getting so frustrated because I've been dealing with this since the summer. When I reached out to a bunch of kids over the summer, and I called 10 kids, I called their parents, I touched base with them every week, I had one kid show up, okay? And I had, you know, I had computers lined up, I had tutoring lined up, I had everything lined up to let them get through this, and none of it worked. So, I have decided I'm going to treat these kids like they're my kids. What would I do if they were my kids? If they were my kids, I would make them sit down and do it. So, I want to try to figure out a way, and I'm asking for some help, but I'm trying to figure out a way to make them have to come to school and do it. Now, the easiest way I can think of to get that done, if they're a half a credit deficient, which is now is just happens to be the end of the semester. If they're a half a credit deficient, especially in reading and math, they've got to get help now. So, I think I can work with the Walkers and get tutoring worked out with the Walkers. I'm working on, my son's working on that now at Vanguard to try to get something coordinated. But I've got to have an idea of the numbers that we're dealing with. And primarily, it's a half a credit deficient in reading or language arts or math that causes the people, the kids not to be able to graduate or pass the F.S.A. So, I need some type of an idea from the district about the numbers that are involved. And I can deal with Howard and Vanguard because that's what I'm familiar with. I know Mr. Rembert very well. He's doing an excellent job there. I know Mr. Carlisle because my son goes there. And I just want to have an idea from those two schools because I can't, you know, I know realistically... As much as I'd like to take it all on, I can't do that. But if I can get a number of kids that are deficient in those areas, I'd like to try to get some intervention done, at least with the Walkers. Now, I know that equity is important, but I just, I can't make kids, like, I can't work the transportation out. I've talked to Mr. Carlisle about it. There's no way. I mean, if I have kids that have to stay for an hour, and I can work out tutoring, peer tutoring is probably the most cost-effective way to do it because kids can get volunteer hours they need for school, they need for scholarships, they need for bright futures. They can do that if we can work that out after school, but I just don't see any way to work it out with the buses. So, I think it's going to have to be their athletics, if they're staying for track every day, and they're credit deficient. I can get the coaches, I think, and I can get Mr. Buttnick to tell them they need to go to study hall for an hour after school before they go to practice. And then, that way, I've got somebody there to help them. They can get, hopefully, some actual instruction and some actual help so they understand how to do it. And then, when they take the F.S.A. or they take whatever, the SAT or the ACT, they actually understand what they're doing. But that's what, I'm just trying to get some idea of what I'm dealing with. I don't want to take on some monstrosity that's just not realistic. But I think if I can get the Walkers to at least start off with that, and if it works, then we can potentially expand it to other kids.
Thank you.
So, yes, sir?
I have a question. Are you gearing this initially towards the kids or athletics?
I think that's the easiest way to do it because, like, for track example, they have to come every day. Their parents will let them do that. I mean, I tried, I tried all summer, okay, to get these kids to come to the field house where I had computers and I had Wi-Fi.
Right.
And all they had to do was show up, and none of them did. And I called them, and I tried, and it just didn't work.
That leads me to the next part of this, if that's the case. If these kids are participating in athletics, they should be, they shouldn't be credit deficient.
Oh, that's not true.
Okay, and if that's...
They have to have a 2-0.
But if that's the case, then that's a bigger problem that we need to address.
I understand that, but the thing to me is, they have to, if they get out of school, okay, they can't go to get food or hang out with their friends or whatever before practice starts. If they are credit deficient, they need to be told by the athletic director or the coaches, they have to go here. If they have to go here, they can't play, they'll go.
And that's what I'm hearing.
Right.
It has to be some ownership on the coaches, the A.D.s.
Yes, sir.
But the bigger ownership is on the parents and the students. If these kids want to participate, we should not let any kid participate if they're half a credit deficient or if they're failing.
The problem is, they've gone through all of middle school doing that. You guys, I mean, not you, but they have let them get promoted. They've let them go through school being credit deficient. You can't tell kids, well, you could do it for three years, but now that you're in high school, we're going to change all that. Because their mindset is, I don't have to have it. I need to have enough to get promoted. And if I'm credit deficient, a credit here or a half a credit here, I'm still going to go through. They're not going to keep me in middle school when I'm 16 and I'm getting ready to drive. I'm going to go. I mean, that's why they call it D and done. Get me a D and get me out. And that's what they say. I mean, they want their D and get me out the door. I mean, that's what they do. And so, the only way that I know to make them do it is to have a coach or to have an athletic director or have somebody say, if you are credit deficient, you are going to the study hall for 45 minutes or whatever. Then, you can go to practice, and then I have you, and there's nothing you can do. Because that's what I would do to my kids. I would just pick them up from school and make them go to my office, and you would have to study. And that's what I would do with them. So, I'm going to try to treat these kids the exact same way I would treat my own. You get out of school, you got to come here, you have to do this. If you don't do it, you're not playing.
Ms. Slaughter, you're bringing this before us. Your timing is really good because we're finishing up the first semester. So, schools are going to know very shortly which students earn credits for the first semester of this year and where they are exactly now, you know, very soon. And it will be a great time for Vanguard to have those success chats with students. And now, another thing you have in your favor is a sense of urgency. Because last summer was a long way from a semester before graduation. And procrastinating students want to put their foot on the gas, you know, when it's in their face. We talked about this at our SAC meeting last night for Vanguard. Did you happen to be on?
I wasn't on last night.
Okay, I didn't have the gallery thing on, so I wasn't sure if you were on or not. But Ms. Farmer is sharing the same frustration. She's had seven kids show up for tutoring. And she's like, you know, I'm open to any suggestions. We've got to get these kids, you know, the skills that they need academically. And there were a couple of students that also participated, and they came forward and said, well, it's important for the kids to know that they can go to tutoring together. You have to come up with the ways to contact kids. The kids will actually check. Like, you know, if during the success chats, if students are willing to share their text number or go through their school email address, whatever it is, you know, to be able to stay in communication with the kids. And so, you have to have a carrot, but you also have to have a stick. So, it's very timely that you're up here before us because that was the biggest part of our conversation.
I mean, I worked with these kids the whole first semester of school, and like, just getting them to sign up for the ACT, which they had to have to get out of school. Did you sign up for the ACT? Oh, yes, ma'am, Ms. Slaughter. I signed up for the ACT every single day. Yes, I did it. Yes, I did it. I called their mother. Oh, no, they haven't signed up yet. So, I had to call the coach, and then the coach made sure they signed up. Because then, when I told him they hadn't signed up, then all of a sudden, poof, it got signed up real quick. So, I just, I can't, they're not going to do it unless they're made to do it. And the best person to make any kid in school, especially a sports kid, to do something is the coach. So, we've got to have the coaches buy in and make them do it. And it can't just be, will you like to come? Can you do this? It needs to be, you are going to this study hall because you are credit deficient in reading and math or English and math, and if you do not go, you cannot play.
That needs to be the rule.
Understand.
That should have been, that should have been the understanding.
So, I mean, I'm just looking through our district policy right now on athletics. I was curious about this. So, basically, we're saying that students have to abide by all of the requirements established by the Florida High School Athletic Association. Well, my assumption is that there's not an FHSAA rule that dictates that the kids have to be credit, you know... The same thing is attendance as well. There's not an FHSAA policy on attendance. This was something I talked about significantly in the campaign. But it is up to individual districts to make those kinds of policies and to put that in place. And so, looking at what our policy is on athletics, I mean, I've mentored college athletes myself. I know the ones that have gone off to Division One who had to sit out a whole year because they were not academically eligible after they left junior college. So, I totally get what you're saying. They may say that they're doing great, and they're not. They may say they're going to class, but they're not. They may say this and that and the other. Not everybody's that way, but there certainly are those that are athletically gifted that don't understand that their ticket out of here is actually that degree. Their ticket out of here is actually having the grades to be able to play at that level. And it's not, they are student athletes for a purpose. Student is first on purpose. And so, I am fully in support of working on this policy, frankly, as a School Board policy. We need to put a little bit more teeth into it, and then that way, our principals and athletic directors would be held to that standard that they would have to abide by.
I get where you're going, Ms. Campbell, but what she's proposing right now is at one school, there has to be some things that be put in it, and I don't know if we'd be able to...
I just want to try it.
Multiply it at every school right now.
I don't think we are there yet because I don't know what's going to work with these kids. I mean, I don't.
So, you're asking for us to help do something type of, like a pilot-type program?
Correct. I'm asking, I'm asking, let's try this and see if it works. Let's see if we can get kids that are deficient to get it, to get it up. And Mr. Rembert's been very good at Howard Middle School about, you know, moving some money around for Title I where he's got teachers working with kids so that they can get the algebra and the geometry down, and then they can graduate. But the problem is, is that it's extreme. I mean, I hated math in school, so I understand that they don't like it. I understand that. But, you know, they have to have it to get out. And if they don't understand it, throwing them in front of a computer and having them do Play-Doh is not going to get them out. I mean, they have to be able to understand what they're doing, and they have to have somebody to help them. And I understand the budget and everything else, which is why I'm trying to get my son to organize, you know, kids to help kids at the school to get it done. And we can get it done after school's out before practice starts if I can have a block of time to get that done.
How much time is between after school and...
It depends. Like, sometimes the coaches want to do it. It depends on the coaches. Some coaches want to get out of there at 5:00. So, they want the kids to start practice at 3:00. And I'm just suggesting that if they're credit deficient, maybe they only need to practice an hour. Because if they're credit deficient, they're not going to get out of school. And the coach may care, they're a great athlete, they've got a 2-0, they can play. You know, I don't want them, I want them practicing two hours. They have to understand that if they're credit deficient, they cannot do that because they are not going to graduate, and they could win a state title, and if they don't graduate, it doesn't help them.
So, this is a solution, obviously, or a potential for solution right now. But ultimately, the big goal in my mind is that we need to put some teeth behind this policy because we need to nip it in the bud so that we have to come up with solutions like this. Because she's come up with a solution without even us fixing the policy to make us to have to have a solution.
Well, and we do need the support, and we need a conversation, you know, with the umbrella organization because we all want our students to be successful athletically. But for everything that we've all just been sitting here saying, that's short-term, you know? It's short-term glory, and then you see the long-term pain when you've been in the district long enough and you see kids that, you know, go up on scholarship, and they're back home walking up the dirt road by Christmas, you know? So, I love your enthusiasm. I love what you're trying to do. It sounds to me like it's going to be really important to get the buy-in from the adults that the kids admire enough and that have the leverage to put these kids where they need to be, which is with teachers and volunteer students. And we talked about that last night, too, that students do need volunteer hours, and does SAC have some money? Does Title I have some money? You know, you can find a way when it's for kids and it's what's right.
And Ms. Farmer's there to help them. It's just getting them to her.
So, what are the next steps?
Right, and how can, how can we... Right, and how can, how can we help and what?
Yeah, what can we do to help move this forward?
I, I think what we need to do is get the athletic director and the coaches to buy into the fact that these kids, if they are deficient, if they are credit deficient, they need to know who they are and that they need to, if they make up a half a credit, they can get the other half a credit made, made up. I mean, all the studies that I've looked at show that. If they lose an entire year, they're done. They can't do it. They're not going to make it up. I mean, that's just not going to happen. So, we've got to get them now. Because we know now if they have an F the first semester, we are going to know that this weekend.
Right.
And if they do, then they've got to be told that by their coaches who they respect and by their athletic director who they respect, that if they want to play, they're going to have to go and get tutoring and it's free. I mean, it's like, they're not paying for it. It's free.
So, Dr. Gullett, what, what can we do to, to address this? I, I think we need your direction on this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. I, I'm a big proponent of scholar athletes, scholar being first to athletes, right? That's why we have the term scholar athletes. So, I think convening Mr. Whitehouse, who I think's out in the hall, could probably touch base with you outside as well, to convene a group to address this. I do believe that we need to communicate sooner rather than later and we focus on the scholar part of the athletics.
It's setting that expectation and.
Yes.
And it's, it's greatly needed.
And can they, can they add Mr. Phillips to that conversation as well?
Absolutely, oh, absolutely.
Get back to us like the next work session?
Yes, sir.
Right. Yeah, because the semester is ending and some of these kids, I mean, we, we need to, we need to do this now. We need to do this now.
You know, the kids are going to get that huge eye-opener that now it's just a few months away.
And that's, that's the thing that's concerning me. This kid has been failing.
Flowed.
Floating. This first semester, they should not have been playing any sport. They, they should have been emphasis on academics. And if these kids didn't play fall sports and they're getting ready to play spring sports, they, they may have did what they need to do to play spring sports, but then when it comes back to the fall, they're going to float again. And we need to, we need to kind of cut all that floating out.
And I think the 2.0 is the criteria for them to play. But we need to, and I agree with Ms. Campbell, put some teeth in it that the credit deficiency has to play a role.
If you have an A in P.E. and you fail English, you have a 2-0.
Yes, right.
Right.
Right, absolutely.
Right. It's a numbers game from there.
If you are credit deficient, you know, you can still play, but you have to participate in meaningful tutoring. And, and notice I said meaningful. I, I know a lot about Plato.
Right. And if they have, if they have to come after school before practice, the parents have to have them there anyway. So, it's not going to be a problem for them to have them there. They'll have transportation worked out. It won't be a problem. I just don't, I can't figure out what to do. Unfortunately, at this point, I'm working on it. But I can't figure out what to do with the kids where we have to bust them. Because having them stay is going to be a problem.
Some of these kids love the sports that they play. And they make a way to get there for summer workouts. They make a way to get to whatever they need to do. We have to support that and encourage it more and puts, again, that's where the teeth come in at.
Yes.
That's where the teeth come in. I remember when I was at Forest, if we didn't do our summer workouts, we had to run when school came back in. It's, there ought to be some same type of consequences, academics, academics.
And that's where, once we put teeth to this, whatever this looks like as we massage this, then word gets out and it trickles down into, guess what? Potentially, MCYFL is starting to check grade cards. Potentially, you know, all of our basketball leagues and Big Sun and they're all starting to check grade cards because it matters once the kids get up in higher levels. So, it, it's time, thank you for bringing this up, because it's time that we put some teeth to this.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Whitehouse will meet you in the hallway when, when you're done here.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Slaughter.
Thank you.
Very much. You guys have a great night.
Set up a time to meet soon.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, it just all is connected. We're trying to create this culture of excellence here and, you know, you don't do it any other way. Okay, yeah, that's it, right? Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-11, a resolution to implement a student crime watch program through the Marion County Children's Alliance Text-to-Tip Program and the Fortify Florida Program? May I have a motion, please?
So, moved.
Moved by Campbell. Seconded by Cummings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Approval of consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C-7.1 through C-16.2, with the exception of item C-9.1 that has been withdrawn completely from the agenda? Moved by Cummings. Seconded by Campbell. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Okay, we're on to donations. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $46,000?
So, moved.
Moved by McColl? Seconded by Cummings. Okay, we have $1,000 to Anthony Elementary School from Fidelity Manufacturing. $4,000 to Career and Technical Education from Marion County Hospital District. Re-roofing materials and labor valued at $25,000 to Marion County Public Schools Facilities Department from CNS Roofing Incorporated. $1,000 to Pheasanton Elementary School from Pheasanton School Alumni Association Incorporated. $2,500 to Howard Middle School from their business partner Cox Communication via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to Oak Crest Elementary School from their business partner Cox Communication via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $10,000 to Vanguard High School from Marion County Hospital District. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? I don't think so. It's unanimous. Let's see, Ms. McColl, would you give our thanks tonight, please?
Sure. Again, thank you to our business community and the citizens that continue to give to our schools to, to help make us a district of excellence. So, so thank you. We are very grateful for all that you do. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, well, on to board committee reports and concerns. Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I want to provide a couple of brief updates. First, I'm happy to report that our 10,000, our order of 10,000 Chromebooks has arrived.
Oh, yay.
We talked about that quite some time in the fall last year. But, and we are in the process already of distributing those. They are being distributed to our schools and L-300 schools that need them the most right now. And then there's a, a process to roll the rest of them out. I anticipate they will all be out and operational in the hands of students for those who need them by the end of this month. So, that's great news to have all those in hand. They're also going to help us as we have to move students to online learning and that continues this semester. So, I also am, I'm happy to take the opportunity to thank, as Ms. Cathy Gotcher was recognized, something she said about inspiration really struck me. And I had the opportunity with, with several of you. Thank you for joining us in the caravan to recognize our Teachers of the Year finalists, our Golden Apple teachers, right? And in the process of doing that last Friday, what I, what I said to them and I said to the group was, they just represent our dedicated innovative teachers that are hap, that's happening every day. They, they represent so many. And for the teach, some of the teachers that I saw and was able to present the Golden Apple to on Friday, I actually have seen them teach and it's such a pleasure to say, well, of course. Right? Because there's great teaching happening every day. So, don't want to miss the opportunity to recognize not only our phenomenal support team, all of our support staff, but are also our teachers that are doing the work on the front lines every day in spite of this thing called a pandemic that we're dealing with. So, they're teaching all of our students. So, it is the first board meeting of, of this new year and it's a time to recognize that we are onward and upward. We will be in the top third of the state. We are, I want us to be the, the most improved district in the state and I think we could do that. I know we can do that. Told, I told Ms. Sandy, I said, you said it before, watch us. We can and we will. And that all of these teachers and support staff that we are recognizing represent all of us and all that we can do. So, I think it's a good time to, to make sure everybody knows we are moving on and we're moving up. And, and this is a new year and I'm looking to great things ahead. So, thank you for those who are doing the work every day to inspire our students and to inspire each other. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gullett. Attorney Powers, do you have anything for us?
I would like to take an opportunity to thank all the staff who have been working on our Neola policy updates. We have, through the guidance of the superintendents at a, a committee and trying to review them and get them together. We've been working on that diligently and staff is putting a lot of effort into that and, and working very closely with the legal department in doing so. I think accomplishing more than just the goal we set out to. I think it's also accomplishing the goal of having the legal department being able to work intimately with each of those other departments in order to help achieve a result that all of us together have input on. So, I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you to Dr. Gullett and to all the staff who are working on that. Progress has been exceptional and we're continuing to work hard to improve the district in that vein. And Happy New Year to all and look forward to a good 2021.
That's right. That's right. Thank you, Attorney Powers. And I think we'll all be very glad when that process finally ends. It's, it's been a long one, but it's accelerated mightily since you came on board. So, thank you very much for your leadership on that. Ms. Martinez-Lopez?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Ms. Campbell?
Well, Happy New Year again. I know we said that in our work session last week, but it's, it's really interesting to see how much has happened just went since Thursday. There, there's a lot of updates that I, I wanted to share with you, some meetings and things I've participated in. First thing I wanted to bring up, and you all probably have seen these emails as well, the requests that teachers have made to work from home on Friday as well as to not require four 10-hour days during holiday weeks. I don't think that we have time to address it right now, but I do think this, this upcoming weekend, we probably cannot address it. But we do have another holiday week coming up with President's Day in February and potentially we can have that conversation in advance of that, how we can potentially work on another arrangement rather than four 10-hour days, especially with teleworking options available now. But I, I echo Dr. Gullett on the doc, on the Golden Apple caravan. It's always a joy. So, congratulations certainly to rookie Teacher of the Year Ms. Dingman at Emerald Shores and the other five Golden Apples who are all finalists for Teachers of the Year, excuse me, finalists for Teacher of the Year. And I want to say special thanks to Jenkins Auto Group because that one's always a fun one. This year's Teacher of the Year will be receiving a three-year lease on a 2021 Hyundai Sonata, if you guys did not see that. So, that's a beautiful car that is a part of that. So, in Thursday's work session, we discussed the committee assignments for each board member. So, I'll be interested to see where we go with that discussion as it continues. But I have been assigned to City of Ocala Planning and Zoning, which I participated in last evening. And much to their surprise, they haven't seen a school board representative in quite some time. But on the agenda was the Pine Oaks Golf Course, the West Oaks Development. And so, I asked the engineer a question for their prospective timeline. And certainly, they have some hurdles that they're going to have to overcome. They did pass the planning and zoning portion last evening and they are on the agenda for city council next week. But if they get all of their approvals, their goal is that they will have occupancy within one year of the approvals. So, the first round will be apartments, a lot of them, 800 plus. So, over the next eight years, they are, they will have 386 single-family homes, 832 multifamily residential units, that's those apartments, and 150 townhomes. That's potential for hundreds of kids. So, I've, I've talked to Dr. Gullett about that and I know that she's working with staff to determine if that's all Evergreen District, what that looks like. But I just wanted to give you an update. Hot off the presses last night, that is the engineer told me directly that their timeline will be occupancy within one year of final approvals. Today, I also participated in the Governor's West meeting that happened virtually and the topic of Howard Academy came up. So, I assured them that the board had made a commitment during last week's work session that we are going to move forward with the repairs needed for Howard Academy. But members of Governor's West, including Dr. Barbara Brooks, had brought up how they are interested in working with the school district on potential ideas on how Howard Academy can potentially be repurposed and what they as a community would like to see. So, I know there'll be more dialogue about that, but that meeting also just happened this morning. Another note that happened during our work session last week was one of the committees that we discussed that was a committee I had been assigned to, but we all have seen the information from Mr. Hurley, that the Public School Advisory Committee, we had discussed removing it from our list of committees. But through the emails, I think that we've seen, what I would like to see instead of removing it entirely is actually to have Mr. Powers, if it pleases the board, Mr. Powers to work with the other government attorneys to actually work to amend that interlocal agreement. I spoke at length with Mr. Hurley about that. And where it stands right now, we don't necessarily need that committee to function actively, but we do need quite a few amendments to that interlocal agreement. And it's been many, many years since that's been looked at. So, I don't know if it pleases the board, if we want to move in that direction. But we, there are new attorneys in place. There's, there's just a lot, you know, new leadership in, in all those different governmental bodies. So, potentially to work on that, to amend the ILA on that. Then I, I also wanted to bring up the conversation. I was the board representative this week on the DOH call for the COVID update. And while it was rescheduled, we did participate in that call on Friday evening. And I asked a question of the Department of Health representatives that I have now asked two times since I've been on two of those calls. Five weeks ago, I asked the same question and I asked it again on Friday evening, which was, how many classroom transition, excuse me, how many classroom transmissions do we have recorded? And what I mean by that is, we have a positive case in a classroom. We are then excluding numbers of students based on contact tracing for up to 14 days. How many of those students have transmitted COVID in this classroom tracing that we've done? And the answer I've received now twice is zero. So, yes, we have had transmissions among sports teams and extracurricular activities where they are not wearing masks, they are practicing close together and doing all the things that you have to do on a football, basketball, baseball, all of those kinds of things. Yes, we have had transmissions among some of our ESE population in classroom and other arrangements as well as within our pre-K areas. Yes, those are, are, are the case. But in our other classroom arrangements, we have had zero transmissions. So, my question then becomes, and Dr. Gullett and I talked about this last evening, my question then becomes, at what point do we realize that we as a school district are doing everything we can to mitigate this risk in the classroom setting? And we're being very successful and thank you to our teachers and our custodial staff and everyone, the paras and everyone who is diligently ensuring that our classrooms are safe and our classrooms are clean and all that they need to be, but continuing to have students have to miss up to 14 days of school who are not then contracting COVID? And, and that's just a, a question that I ask of this board. And while I understand, you know, we might want to say, well, that's terrific. You know, we're, we need to keep it up. We need to keep that up. At some point, it's becoming a disservice to all those students. Some students have been having to be removed from classrooms for two and three times for 14 days. And we all know that we're back in school because it's the best environment for kids to have learning. So, I, I want to leave that out there. That, piggybacking on that is also a question about volunteers. And I know that that's also something that has not been something that this board wants to necessarily allow back in. But volunteers, field trips.
We didn't say that.
Okay, good. It had, it had been the conversation in the fall.
Never said that.
It had been the conversation in the fall, but that was definitely not. I have not had an opportunity to participate in a conversation about that. But I would love the opportunity to talk about how we could potentially bring volunteers back, to potentially have field trips. You know, right now, there are no guest speakers. There are no Good News Clubs. There are no Reading Pals. There are no volunteer coaches for some of our sports that may actually be hindering even participation because the volunteer coaches haven't been able to be, new volunteer coaches haven't been able to be a part of that. So, that's all the conversation. I'm not going to belabor that point. The last thing I'll just say is, students and teachers, you have two days left of this semester. Please finish strong. Use your time wisely. Work to do your best in the last two days of this semester. And most importantly, regardless of how the semester wraps up, resolve to start next semester with excellence in mind. You have a clean slate. The first nine weeks starts next week and, or excuse me, the third nine weeks, but you have a clean slate in the first of this semester. So, what can you do to ensure that you have your? So what can you do to ensure that you have your best possible opportunities for excellence? So work today so excellence tomorrow can happen. That's all I have.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. And Dr. Gullett, would you just give us some reminders about what our intentions have been regarding bringing volunteers back? We talked about having them start with us at the start of the school year, and came to the consensus that sadly, likely wasn't in the best interests of the volunteers or our school system. But then, to my memory, we talked about beginning in January, depending on what our numbers were looking like.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Absolutely. So, and I too am committed to making sure that we have all of the services that we can provided to our students. So what we talked about last was that, according to the data provided to us, the patterns of COVID-19 and its impact, that we would look by the third week in January, when we expected this to be the highest, to see what that impact looked like. So far, it does indicate that we're still trending in the same way that we had been predicted, and that we would bring it back to the board to consider what our next steps would be. We knew that January would really be the telling point for what happened during that winter break and what the impact is. So I anticipate that we'll be bringing that to you with a proposal of what that looks like for the board's consideration.
Great, great.
We know that we'd like to see, if possible, if the board permits, mentors and volunteers. We have people who are not able to tutor and all the things that we've talked about.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
I know they're doing Reading Pals online, and it, to some success, but I know that those volunteers really want to be back with those children.
Oh, yes, yes. People have been chomping at the bit, and they want to be part of the success of Marion County Public Schools and within the crisis of the pandemic. And sadly, I think all of us at this point have experienced tremendous losses. So it's a constant balancing act to make sure that we're providing as much opportunity for our students as possible and while keeping everyone as protected as possible. So I look forward to that conversation when you bring it to us, Dr. Gullett. Thank you for refreshing us on the timeline.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I would also want to add, I think it's important to note that that would be voluntary, that we still understand these are sensitive times. And so we would make that, would take every precaution to say that was voluntary. But yes, thank you. May I, Madam Chair, add one other item as a response to provide information based on Board Member Campbell's note on Pine Oak, if I could? I did get some data today on that. So Stephen Ayers has been working on this. They did anticipate, based on some of the preliminary reports of that planned development area. And now, it could change if that planned development is accelerated. But over the course of a number of years, they expect that the initial impact for Evergreen, to your point, would be 165 students additionally, and that for Howard, it would be 75, and for Vanguard, 108. So that wouldn't all happen at once. It would be based on those phases, not just Phase 1, but through Phases 2 through 5 as well, which takes multiple years. So wanted to provide that's the information we have right now. If it changes, we'll certainly provide information to all of you.
Did that, and that's just for the Pine Oaks?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Because I just was at Vanguard and Oak Crest the other day, and you can see those apartments there on that road going from Vanguard to Oak Crest. Those apartments are going up quickly. So it would be interesting to know what the, what their plan is, if that's going to be housing for families, targeted for families, or senior housing, or what. That's, I figured so.
Family housing.
Okay.
Because the other ones around that, right in that near vicinity, are all family type, single-family type.
Right. And it makes sense, because it's gotten to the point where rent has gotten so high in Ocala, and we all know what's happened with housing prices. So I think we're going to continue to see a push for affordable housing for families.
And there was, there was another call this afternoon. I have not received, obviously, an update yet. There was a call late this afternoon to further discuss this with them. So from our members of our team. So we'll provide updates.
And that's where your, all of your collaborations with our business leaders and community partners is really paying, is already paying off and will continue to pay off, so that we are continually positioning ourselves to be part of the conversation as it evolves, so we don't get taken by surprise and have to try to play catch-up, and that we're getting the information, you know, right at the time. And that's really going to help us with our proactive planning. So it's all coming together. All right. Board Member Cummings?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome back as well to everyone from our winter break. Trust that everyone had a great and needed and restful break. I know that I needed it. I want to start by encouraging all of our students to please keep putting forth that maximum effort, because we're back going into our second semester. Please don't get lax right now. I know that we've had an extremely tough year for our semester, but we're going to get through it. And I want to keep encouraging them and our staff to just keep pressing, pressing on towards tomorrow, that we're going to get, we're going to get to where we need to be. It's been tough. We're seeing kids in and out of the classroom. We're seeing, not only kids in and out of the classroom, we're seeing staff off and on the job. And that's tough, because there's so much interruption, so many interruptions, and it's difficult to teach under those conditions. So I just want to encourage them, thank our staff, all of our staff, from the bus driver all the way to the principals for what they're doing in keeping our schools open and in keeping these kids safe. It's a tremendous task, and they're doing an excellent job at it. And I'm just praying that we'll be out of this soon. Safety. I don't want us to get complacent with this safety, with COVID, with this pandemic. Just because you can see the edge of the woods doesn't mean that you're out of the woods. You still got to go through some woods to get out of it. And I want our staff, because I keep, I keep getting these phone calls. I keep getting these, these reports of people not, of people getting lax and people getting comfortable and not wearing their mask and at sports events, at basketball games and things like that. We cannot get lax at things like this. Last Friday, and I talked to Mr. Phillips, last Friday, Forest and Vanguard played a rival game at Vanguard. Vanguard is, has always been a basketball power. Mark knows that. So that's always a rival game. But when people are coming into the gym and they're not wearing the mask, and then when you, when the newspaper takes a picture of it, of a kid going up for a layup or whatever it is, and you can see in the crowd, people not masked, that paints a bad picture of our district. That says that we're not following or enforcing our own rules, that we've been acted. So I'm asking, I've asked before, that our staff, we, it would have been easy for me if I'd have been there, because I'd have said, listen, stop the game until these folk put on masks. Now, that's harsh, but it's about safety, keeping these kids safe, keeping those people safe that are in the gymnasium, and making sure that they go home just the way they came. So please, don't get complacent. Please don't get complacent in the schools. And we're visiting schools. That's the thing. We're visiting schools. And don't, don't jump up and put the mask on when you see us come to the door. The mask could already be on. Those things should already be in place when we get there. And please be safe. Next, this Monday. This Monday is Martin Luther King Day, the 18th, and there's not going to be a march this year. Normally, we all get to participate in a march and walk across freezing cold. It's going to be cold, but we won't be marching this year. Allison, this will be your first, first one with us. And, but we look forward to when we will be able to march again. However, even though there's not going to be a march, there is still going to be some events, some MLK activities. And we have, are trying to do, not trying, we're going to do, a King, for the King Holiday, it's going to be a Day of Giving. I mentioned it at the work session, that in collaboration with the MLK Commemorative Committee, the Second Bethland Baptist Association, and the National Pan-Hellenic Council of Marion County, we're going to have the very first Martin Luther King Day food caravan. And it's going to be to Interfaith Services, our local food pantry. Our lineup will be at 9:00 at the Ocala Theological Seminary on Fourth Street, right beside the foundation, right beside the foundation. And we're going to line up there at 9:00, and we're going to caravan all the way, three, four blocks, to Interfaith with our non-perishables in our car. Interfaith will be closed that day, but they're going to be open. They will have people there to unload our cars. So please get your non-perishables. Please, let's be a blessing on that day. It's, I always say that MLK Day is not a day off, but a day on. And that means it's a day on of service. And I think Dr. King would really be appreciative that we're helping those that really need help during this time of year, especially during this pandemic. So I'm encouraging you all to please participate. So load your cars, your trucks, vans, and join the caravan on Monday. That's my wrapping. That's the most I can do.
Trucks, vans, and caravans.
And then, on a, on a more serious note, last week, last week, we were here in a work session. We were in a work session, and I received a phone call from a grandparent. The grandparent of one of our high school students, no name, no blame, but it's serious. And the grandparent shared with me that they had just received a phone call from their grandchild that was having some issues in class in regards to the events that had taken place in our nation's capital on Wednesday. And the grandchild shared with the grandparent that there was a conversation concerning these events that happened in our nation capital on that Wednesday, that we all know what happened. We saw it. And the conversation went that, it went where the kid became upset because they were being told that what they were seeing really wasn't true, really wasn't so. And how can you tell a high school student that what they had just witnessed the night before on the news, what they had just witnessed that morning on the news, was not true? It was bothersome to me. It's been troubling to me this whole week. I did talk to Mr. Villanueva, and the situation was clearly corrected. So thank you. Thank you for that. But it made me, it made me start to reflect on some things on where we are as a community, as a state, as a country, in this time that we're in. I thought about my father, and today would be his birthday. If he was here, he would be 101 today. And I tried to, I thought about an event in my life, in my young life. I remember, and I was very young, but I remember this, I remember the Watergate trials that were on TV when I was a kid. And I remember watching that with my father. And the reason I remember that is because it interfered with me watching Captain Kangaroo and Romper Room and Sesame Street and Mr. Rogers and Zoom. I remember this very clearly. And I remember asking my dad, my father, why is it that I have to watch this? We only had one TV, so whatever that one TV was on, that's what everybody watched. And I remember my father saying that this is, this trial was important to the country. And he stated to me, and I remember, like it was, he said, you're living in a historic time. He said that you're living in a historic time. And to come back to 2021, I thought about that. And I said, I had to say the same thing to my son, to my grandkids, that we're living in a historic time. And because we're living in such a historic time, we cannot sugarcoat the ugliness that we saw, but we should not celebrate it, but we should celebrate all of the good things that happened that same day. What happened that day that was positive was that, that very same day, there were two congressmen that were elected. And I'm not political. It's not about politics or anything like that. Two congressmen that were elected from the state of Georgia. One was an African-American male, hadn't happened since Reconstruction. That's a first. One was a Jewish male, had never happened, from the state of Georgia. Those were first. But then, something even greater happened that same day, where the Congress voted and certified what the Electoral College said, and that we now have our first, very first female Vice President of the United States, and she happens to be an African-American female. Those are first. Those are things that need to be celebrated. We should not be telling kids that what they saw isn't true and trying to put any type of perspective that we have on it. We, we push, we talk about curriculum that has, curriculum that, for kids to have critical thinking, and then we try to influence what they're thinking by telling them what they saw was not so. That's a great disservice to any of our kids. That's a great disservice to, as a, as a school district. And I thank God that the powers that be were able to rectify that situation real fast. We need to let these kids know that they are living in a historic time, and to pay attention, to be safe, but know that, as a country, they saw some bad things. But as, as my father told me, we'll get through this. We'll get through this. We're strong enough to get through this. And, and I remember seeing, hearing that from my father, who grew up, who grew up, who was born in 1920, who grew up in a different time. If he could say that then, surely, we should be saying that to our kids today. So that's my comments for the night.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Ms. McCall?
I always feel like I've been to church when Eric speaks.
Well, let's pass the train now.
See what we get.
Very eloquent speaker that he is. I too want to congratulate all of our five Golden Apple teachers and our Rookie Teacher of the Year, Ms. Dingman. I'm sorry I was unable to be on the caravan. I think that's the first one I've missed in many, many years, but had a conflict. But we celebrate you, and we celebrate that you represent all of your profession so very well. And because of you, and because of the others in our district, I agree with Dr. Gullett, we will be a district of excellence, I hope sooner than later. And I do believe that we will get there. So congratulations to all of you. I also wanted to share, this time of year, the Public Education Foundation is always doing their big golf tournaments and sneakers and smores. And it's a tremendous weekend. It's called the Classic. It's January 16th and 17th. But this year, it looks a little different. They are doing the golf tournaments, and they are doing a virtual sneaker and smores. And I think you have from the 16th to the 30th to complete your walk. But I would ask the community, this is the largest fundraiser for those scholarships for Take Stock in Children. We have over 200 children currently in the program, and we have graduated. I don't know how many we've graduated. But I said when we started Take Stock in Children, and I contend today, that it is one of the best dropout prevention programs that make children and students successful that, that we have in the state, and certainly in Marion County, as it is a model for the state. So please, it is a fundraiser, and if, if you want to give to that scholarship fund, please contact the Public Education Foundation. We had the Children's Alliance Backpack Drive on Saturday. Allison, thank you for coming out and helping us. It was really cold. It was really cold. And nobody recognized me because I was so bundled. I've been with a mask on. Nobody knew who I was. But we didn't give out too many backpacks. I think we gave out about 100. In the fall, we gave out over 1,000. So that kind of tells you. And the weather could have played a role. But what I would like to say to the community is that if, if your children need a backpack, if you need school supplies, if you will contact the Children's, Marion County Children's Alliance, we still have plenty for you, and we'll be happy to get those to your children. And the last thing, as you know, I serve as the legislative liaison for you, for the Florida School Board Association. I had a wonderful meeting with Stan McLean last week. I don't know if you're aware, but Stan is the chairman of the Secondary Education and Career Development Subcommittee. He is the vice chairman of the Education and Employment Committee. He is on the He is, uh, on the Pre-K Appropriations Subcommittee, so he has some pretty major roles, and he and I had a tremendous meeting. We will stay in touch throughout session. We have a Legislative Committee Call on Friday, so I will bring to you and highlight with you and sometimes send things to Elena to get out as heads up for you, um, on the things that are going on in session. Um, uh, so financially, I think the state's not as bad as they projected that it was gonna be, I think all of you saw that. Um, but stay tuned, we still have a long way to go, but I will, I will keep you informed, and we are very lucky that Representative McLean is from Marion County, and he has true heart for education. So I, I look forward to working with him. Um, uh, his Legislative Assistant, Thomas Barber, is already on speed dial for me, as so is Representative McLean. So, uh, stay tuned, we hope it's going to be a, a successful session. It's gonna be very different, committee meetings started this week. Um, there are, there are no, uh, n- none of the public is allowed into the Capitol. Uh, they will be having testimony, uh, on Zoom, and there will be some live testimony, but it all looks very, very different this year. So it's gonna be a different type of a session, but a very important session, um, this year. So, so stay tuned, and if you have any questions or suggestions, um, do not hesitate to get those to Elena, and then she can get them to me. So that's it, Madam Chair, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, uh, Board Member McCall. Your, your advocacy and relationship building, no doubt, it's going to help us, and it's very much appreciated. Okay, Board Member, Vice Chair King?
Yes, thank you. Well, as I sat up here this evening, I had been reflective, and I was a little reflective of that beautiful picture of Dr. Gullett, that she does not so like. But I was reflective in the sense that it was about two years ago that four of us board members were sitting here and we were talking about what was important to our community as a board and stuff like that. And one of the items that was brought up was the business aspect of that. And Dr. Gullett, you have come in, and this was a perfect example of, um, that this board has made the right decision, um, as they, you could just see the, the relationship building, and not only with them, but also, you know, with our entire business community, cause we know all of our students will touch our businesses. So, I'm just, I was really pleased about that.
Thank you for that, Doc.
I was, I was just, it was just like, look, we worked on that two years ago, and here it is and we see it. So as you may not like that picture, I love that picture, it's very beautiful. And, um, also, we did, um, some of us did join on the caravan for the Golden Apple Teacher of the Year last week, and that was, um, it's always fun to pop in on those and, and see the excitement. I also did have the opportunity this, well, I've done it a couple of years now, but this year was a little bit different. I was on the committee for, um, the Rookie Teacher of the Year. So I had the opportunity to read the resumes of all our, our rookie teachers, and it's very interesting to get a glimpse of what's going into the classroom and the times, because what they looked like last year are completely different this year. And, um, even the way that we went in and observed the teachers was different, um, because it was on video camera, you know, and last year we were there in person. And, um, I just want to congratulate Emma Dingman, um, she is the Rookie Teacher of the Year, and it was just really precious to see her interacting with our, our children, you know, and, and she would have them in their, her little table, and some would be playing around and, and stuff like that. But she did an excellent job, and, and everyone of you that we did observe, um, it was just very obvious, like even for example, one teacher, she was sitting there, you know, with her students in front of her on a computer, but she also had her students in her classroom. So our schools look completely different. And I'm not sure unless you're truly in the profession or, or seeing it on a, a daily basis, I'm not sure our community completely understands what, um, has truly been going on in our schools. And not that everything's been perfect, because it hasn't, and we just thank you guys, um, for your grace and forgiveness of bump, us bumping along during this journey. But, um, as Dr. Gullett said earlier, she goes, we're moving on and we're moving up, and that's exactly what we're doing. And with that, Happy New Year, and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. Yes, I think two of our Golden Apple finalists were doing the hybrid model.
Online.
Yes, online and, and face-to-face. And to do that with kindergartners, I mean, Ms. Fernandez at, at Shady Hill, it was almost, she had, she just had like this treasure trove of visuals and puppets and things, and, and the kids were really excited for it, and, and they were appropriately, you know, clapping and we love you, Ms. Fernandez, and then they said, um, let's play our color bingo. I mean, they were ready to move on to the, to the next activity, so that pretty much screams engagement to me. It, it was really cool, and, and I was reminded, you know, everyone says, oh, Marion County's the size of Rhode Island. It really is the size of Rhode Island. I think we put on almost 70 miles, Roland. Okay, I want to make sure I have my mileage right. Uh, 76 miles, yes, and, and I was reminded all over again how beautiful Marion County really is. And, and I hope that we can continue to balance the, the development with preserving everything that makes our county so incredibly beautiful and, and special, you know? And, and the southern end of the county, and then going up in, into the north end, and the horse farms and just, it's just so serene. We are blessed in, in, in so many ways, and, and so I, I'm feeling reflective and I'm also feeling specific tonight. It is our first meeting back, schools have been transformed by necessity. It's so different this year, uh, this school year. Uh, and, and we're making it happen, and when, and now it's snowbird's season, and, and so many snowbirds that I've spoken to have said, your schools are open five days a week? I mean, they can't believe it, you know? And not only are, are our schools open five days a week, in the contents of a, context of a pandemic, we're doing quite well, thank you very much. So I'll say thank you very much to everyone, there, it, that's what it takes, you know, we're all cogs in, in the same wheel. And, and one of our many strengths, I think, is that, you know, we aren't afraid to have the tough conversations. We, we come together, we have a sense of humor about it, we hash things out, we get passionate, but then we make progress and, and, and we go forward, and that's so gratifying, um, as, as a board member and a longtime employee. And yes, uh, congratulations to all the golden apples and to Emma Dingman, she comes from a pretty extended family of, of educators. So it's just really neat to see the, the next generation coming up into the world of education. And Jenkins Auto Group, I saw that 2021 Sonata, and, and when the kids at Westport and North Marion heard about that, they were like, that's pretty cool. I said, see, another reason to go into education. You too, maybe, uh, Teacher of the Year someday. And actually, um, Jenkins also earned my business, um, it's all about making partnerships, and I'm now the proud owner, as of Sunday, of a 2021 Kia Soul.
All right.
So, yes.
I saw you exchanging numbers with Ryan Veroni.
That's exactly what it was, I got Ryan's card and Mr. Steve down there took great care of me, so they, it was, it was truly a pleasure, and it's not always a pleasure to go to a car dealership, we know that, so, uh, they were great, so, so that was really fun. Um, yes, uh, the, the CDC guidelines and, and the ongoing conversations with the Health Department, you know, they just have to continue. Our, our burden is so great just trying to educate during these times, and we as educators, you know, we always take on the one more thing because that's just who we are and, and it needs to be done. So continuing these partnerships is incredibly important, and, and to remain nimble, like we were talking about with, with the development that's going on, you know, we, you, you stay nimble by staying in the loop and, and building those trusting relationships so that you can put your cards on the table and, and, and problem solve. So, uh, as, as we move through this, hopefully, whatever happened during Christmas or winter break, uh, we'll see the worst of it, you know, in the next week or so, and, and hopefully then, you know, our numbers will begin to, to flatten out again. Last week was pretty scary. And, and in my travels across all of these schools, I, I was very gratified to see lots of compliance, you know, with the mask wearing. But high school students, I'm gonna speak to you directly, you know, if you're a virtual kid, turn on your camera, you know, you only have one shot at, at an education, and, and your parents or whoever you live with, they're paying taxes for you to get an education, so the only person you're fooling is yourself, you know, by slacking. Um, you know, you're, you're online for a reason and it's difficult, so don't make it any harder on yourself to do well, you gotta turn on that camera and participate. Um, next, uh, and getting towards again, the Attendance Response Committee, uh, that we've had for the past couple of years now with Oak Crest and Evergreen is really bearing fruit. It continues to be a tough population, um, to, to move when it comes to attendance issues, both absences and tardies. But again, we've widened the net, including, um, we had a couple of folks from law enforcement , uh, join us this past Monday, and, you know, those, especially Oak Crest, you know, they, the kids are in tough neighborhoods, and, and if, if the parents are hesitant for them to walk from the back of their neighborhood or their complex to the front until it's light out, it's, it's with good reason. So we, we do need partnerships with everybody to do all we can during those golden times of the beginning of the school day, so the kids aren't late to school and, and, and missing instruction. And they're doing a great job of, of looking at their data and, and really having those conversations with, with families and coming up with incentives and creative, creative ideas, and, and it's borne some really good fruit. And we're also working on the legislative side, um, Ms. McColl, and it's something that we probably need to begin to emphasize, is that educational neglect is not recognized in the state of Florida. But when a kid has missed 40 days, 50 days, 60 days, I can't think of anything more impactful really on a, on a child's life than that. So I, I, I'll be interested to, to hear the, the pros and cons of moving in that direction. I think we talked today about the athletics and that, you know, we have the immediate problem, but that we also have a larger problem, you know? And, and so we've just got to begin to connect all these dots and work with each other, and on, on the premise of we're just trying to do what's best for kids, you know? And so there's, there's still a lot of work to be done, uh, but I was just reminded that, you know, um, don't tell me there's no hope at all, cause together we stand, divided we fall. And I'll leave you with that, thank you. Okay, uh, the next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for January 21st, 2021, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss social-emotional learning curriculum, so please make sure board members that, you know, you've familiarized yourself with the options and are ready to have conversation around that, cause it is something that, that we put forward. COVID-impacted benefit decisions for 2021 and turnaround option plan. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for February 4th at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss school staffing plan already. Fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget update of December 31st, 2020. Review of charter school renewal application, review of ESE, SPMP, textbook adoption, and annual investment report. So that's gonna be a big one on February 4th. Okay, um, unless anyone has anything else, we will need to adjourn because we do have student disciplinary matters.
We need to go to page 15, we need to go ahead and do the expulsion.
Okay, okay. Um, before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through December 3rd, 2020. Uh, Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
None.
Thank you. May I have a motion then to approve the expulsion of student JD 21-010, 010, I'm sorry, JD 21-011E, JD 21-012, JD 21-013, JD 21-015, and JD 21-016 with educational services for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year and the first semester of the 2021, 2022 school year. May I have a motion? Moved by King.
Second.
Second by McCall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed like sign. It's unanimous. This concludes the televised and business portion of the meeting. Reese, we will recess at 7:15 PM. Thank you.